And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever.
Please join me in the flag ceremony. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on our agenda is consider approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Herod to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is citizens' participation. We encourage citizens, if they would like to come forward and say something, feel free to come forward. You have a time limit of three minutes. Please state your name and sign in, please, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tom Claybrook. I live at 1501 North Union here in Shawnee. How much money has been spent or is owed in legal fees associated with the numerous disputes with the CPN?
Are you addressing us or are you asking questions?
Well, as a citizen, I'm asking how much money's been spent.
I don't know that exact number.
Do you have a ballpark figure?
Sir, I'm going to jump in. That question, A, can't be answered, and B, would fall under privileged communication between attorney and client.
Bullhole. Money spent?
That's correct.
It does not have anything to do with the strategies of the...
Attorney buildings.
How does a citizen go to his community and ask how his dollars have been spent?
Sir, there's mechanisms by which to do that outside of the realm of active litigation, but within the realm of active litigation, I could not advise you on how to do that.
I don't believe you.
Okay.
What have we gained through this expenditure?
We're not on question here. You're here to speak. If you want to tell us something...
Okay, if you don't want to respond to one of your citizens about the job that you're doing, then you don't have to.
Okay, anyone else like to come forward? Okay, no one else coming forward? Then we'll move on to item number three. Presentation by the city manager to the employee of the month.
Is Mary here?
Yes, she is.
Come on up. Didn't see you there. There's quite a few people here. Come on up, Mary. It's my pleasure this month to announce the employee of the month as Mary Belasios. I hope I said your last name correctly. Mary's been with the City of Shawnee Municipal Court since October 2012. She's diligent, hardworking, friendly, cheerful. All the great things that we look for in an employee. And she's also fluent in Spanish, which has saved us on numerous occasions. One such time was just a few weeks ago when the video feed to the jail would not connect, so arrangements were done by speakerphone. Judge Wiley was set for the first prisoner, which happened to be a Hispanic man who did not speak English. And she was just instrumental in allowing us to connect with that individual and do the course of business that we had to do. So, and she also agreed to contact his employer, who had no idea where he was. And Judge Wiley said without Mary, they would have been very much stuck. While she isn't assisting in municipal court, she spends time with her husband, Gilbert. She loves to walk, work in her yard, and try new recipes. She has four sons, one daughter, and many grandkids. Mary, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Item number four is discussion and consideration and possible action to accept the resignation of Ward Two Commissioner.
I'd like to make a motion, if we could, on this, to deny the request of Linda Agee to resign at this point in time. We have too many things on the city's agenda at this point in time that would benefit from her experience and her guidance through this. And she has been an asset to the city. So I ask that we deny this motion or deny this resignation.
I'm not hearing any seconds to your motion. Okay?
So, have you spoken with her? Does she want to come back on the zone?
I think she'd be considered.
Well...
Before we...
She's not...
Yeah. I need to address one thing. Her resignation is effective as a matter of law, and she's the only one who can revoke it. This commission doesn't have the ability or authority to deny her resignation.
Then how can we accept it?
It's ministerial at this point. Even if you don't accept it, she's still resigned.
So the motion will just automatically die?
It'll pass, right?
I don't know that it will pass, but regardless of the action taken, her resignation will remain effective.
So why do we even have this on the agenda?
It wouldn't necessarily need to be. It's typically viewed as an acknowledgement of the resignation to trigger the nomination process.
Did you put it on the agenda?
It was on. I approved it. It's not uncommon for cities to acknowledge a resignation to trigger the process for a reappointment. But it's not necessary for this commission to accept the resignation.
It was probably an error in my office that should have said "acknowledge" rather than "approve." The language should have been acknowledged.
Sure.
Your motion fails, so do we have a motion?
I move to accept the resignation. I think she... I haven't talked to her. I've texted her back and forth and so forth, and she's pretty adamant that she's done it. So I move to accept it.
Okay.
I'm not anything good or bad, Commissioner Shaw, but I just know that she did ask to resign and let the newly-elected commissioner start effectively. So that's one of the reasons that... I mean, I put the item on there on the agenda about appointing Mr. Gillum to Ward Two because that's what she wanted to do. So I'd move we accept it.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number five is discussion, consideration, and possible action to appoint Ron Gillum to the Ward Two City Commission seat vacated by Linda Agee.
He was elected. He won the election?
Yeah.
He's... Yeah, he's here.
You want to make the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I move that we appoint him... We appoint him, yeah, as Ward Two Commissioner.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, if we could ask Judge Wiley and newly-elected Commissioner Gillum to come forward to the podium there for a swearing-in. You'll raise your hand and be sworn. Repeat after me. I, Ronald Gillum...
I, Ronald Gillum.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive...
And I will not knowingly receive...
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any valuable things.
Other valuable things.
Other valuable.
Thank you. For the performance or nonperformance of any act pertaining to my office...
For the performance or nonperformance of any act pertaining to my office...
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As Ward Two Commissioner...
As Ward Two Commissioner...
...to the best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Gillum, come forward. Please enjoy us. Will.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I've got my back to you recovery on leg. I mentioned that big relaxer on the back of my leg.
At this time, item number seven is a presentation by Michelle Briggs, President and CEO of Avitas Foundation. We're honored to have you here, Michelle.
Thank you, Wes. Formerly, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. As you know, I'm Michelle Briggs, President and CEO of the Avitas Foundation. It is my pleasure to announce this evening... As you know, Avitas means "one who brings glad tidings" or "bearer of good news." And I have very, very good news to share with you this evening. It is my pleasure to announce the forging of a major partnership between the Avitas Foundation and the City of Shawnee to implement the master trails and sidewalk plan. What is contemplated is not only substantial, but unprecedented in the community. A five-year plan to build fourteen miles of sidewalks at a cost of around thirty-five... $3.5 million. As proposed, the Avitas Foundation will match dollar-for-dollar $350,000 annually...
Wow.
...for these efforts through the year 2021. The proposed improvements are noted on the map before you, and included are some unallocated improvements so that we can be flexible to fund new projects, including the planned new elementary school by Shawnee Public Schools, who, of course, the location is unknown at this time. The project speaks to the core mission of the Avitas Foundation: health, wellness, and quality of life. If you review the planned improvements, you will see a few consistent themes: connections to schools, parks, neighborhoods, and existing safe-walking paths. When complete, there will be multiple north-south and east-west connections throughout our community. This plan truly creates a legacy for the City of Shawnee, and we are very proud and pleased to be a part of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle. I just have just a few follow-up comments. It's been such a pleasure to work with the Avitas Foundation and Ms. Briggs on this initiative, and I'm so thankful for their support. I know how important it is to all of you and the community. And what has been done for walkability and quality of life over the last few years in Shawnee really has been substantial. When you look at all the projects downtown, the Bryan Street Trail, what's been done at the airport track, the resurfacing and the new lighting, Kickapoo Street with sidewalks, and Kickapoo South with sidewalks forthcoming. This generous gift from Avitas will ensure that these efforts will continue and that we strengthen neighborhoods and provide important connections. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank staff members that helped make these projects happen. In particular, I'd like to thank City Engineer John Pryorwicki and Plan Director Justin DeBruin and their staff. They've been essential to all of these efforts. These projects are designed in-house. They manage the contractor. They help with all aspects, and they will be leading this effort going forward. And in conclusion, you know, the City Commission just recently adopted a new brand for Shawnee, and the tagline of that brand is Shawnee: Great Things on the Horizon. And thanks to the Avitas Foundation, I think it's clear that our horizon is bright, and we've got good things in store. So, thank you again, Michelle. Thank you to the Board of Directors from the Avitas Foundation.
Item number eight is considering ordinance. Authorizing the calling and holding of an election for the purpose of submitting to the voters the question of amending the present hotel-motel surcharge to seven and one-half percent or $1, whichever is higher. Mr. Erickson, would you...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, put it in your packet as a series of agenda items all related to one singular thing, which is the proposed increase in the hotel-motel tax. The documentation before you shows a rate of 7.5%, which would be the maximum amount that staff would recommend. And that would be a 2.5% increase. That would set just below... Just below the rate at the Grand Hotel Casino, which is 7.77. So I think to remain regionally competitive, we need not exceed that. Put it in your packet as a memorandum that details sales tax and occupancy tax comparisons around the state. You'll see that this proposed rate would put us at the top regionally, although there are other communities with rates at or above this proposal. Of course, you have full discretion to leave it as is, to keep it at the proposal of seven and a half or just up or down either way. As proposed, the only change would be the rate. The use of the funds as codified would stay the same, which does... Which provides for use of the funds for any number of tourism-related activities. It's a pretty broadly worded statement. And how you have traditionally spent those monies is you have engaged in a contract with the Commission and Visitors Bureau, or what is now Visit Shawnee Incorporated. And you could continue to do so and leave them at their current rate and then allocate these additional funds for other purposes. But those other purposes, as written today, are not specifically enumerated. Yes, sir?
So if we want to have this designated for tourism and a different allocation of what it goes to today...
Yes, sir.
...so to speak, would we have to decide on that tonight as well?
I don't believe you would have to decide on it tonight. You could... You would do it as part of the annual appropriation process through the budget. If you wanted language... If you wanted changes to the language tonight, you could defer action, and staff would prepare that language, and we would have that for your August 1st meeting.
I think pretty much everybody in our community can realize our number-one attraction is the Expo. You know, and I do think there's... Our... I don't know if it's the second, but ranks real high, is our Pot County Museum.
Yes, sir.
And I know we might want to consider, you know, something in those two areas. I'm seriously about...
That's what I'm thinking, too, that instead of just keeping it allocated the way it is, where a big portion goes to VSI, that we say we're going to spend more on Expo and Museum, right? And allocate it for that.
And could we also consider maybe the downtown Shawnee businesses? You know, they are currently needing some support to get revitalized down there somewhere.
You know, I wrestled with that. And the reason I say that is, is that the businesses up north... I've had two or three of them say, "Why are y'all allocating money down there and not giving money to us?" You know, I don't know. That's something that the commission needs to wrestle with. But I do know downtown's well.
They have thousands of more vehicles traveling through that area every day. I mean, that's one reason, probably. I mean, the other be it's the attraction. Yeah, there's a... It's a... There's a big thoroughfare, I-40.
That's what the commission needs to decide.
I'm not necessarily against... I like the idea of helping downtown, don't we? But I think that it ought to be defined projects, you know, till we know where the money's being spent.
Sure.
Because I don't know where the money would be spent. You know, to say we're going to give... If it's... You know, maybe we can say that we set aside so much to spend on projects to help, you know, our areas that need help.
Or our facades.
And those projects to be named later.
A.D.A.
But it would be related to tourism and, you know, and vacation and things like that.
What's your thoughts on that, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, Commission members, the... If this was approved by voters, it would not even take effect until the second quarter of 2017. So that would be April 1st. And by the time there were substantial funds to do anything with, you'd be kind of mid-2017, which conveniently does correspond with the budget process and the approval process. So if it pleases the commission, we would... We could wrap that into that annual process, and this would dovetail nicely.
Could it sneak up on us, though? I mean, could we just forget about it in a year?
Well, I mean, those funds would remain in a reserve account, and I think as the staff, we would know that there were worldly projects, be it Expo projects, or museum projects, or downtown projects. I think we would come back to you for that.
So what you're saying is the additional...
You'll have the projects.
The additional percentage that would go into a reserve account is what I'm hearing you say.
We have an account today where those funds are deposited.
And the tourism or CBD would get what they're currently getting percentage-wise. And then the rest of this would be divided up by the City Commission when they approve the budget, or whatever that is.
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing?
So this incremental increase would be allocated to projects to be named later?
Yes.
It's not automatically going to go to VSI.
It's not earmarked to...
It's going to earmark for the appropriate tourism-type projects, whether the Expo, or the museum, or downtown, or north... Or south of north of town.
Or a little bit of all of them, whatever.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Only thing...
Is there any language we need to consider or be concerned about tonight, Justin?
I think the only... I think the policy debate and discussion for the commission is, do you like the rate as it is now, or do you want it lower? And number two, do you want any additional language added to more clearly allocate those funds? The existing contract with VSI does not contemplate an increase in hotel-motel tax. We'd probably have to, down the road, if it was approved by voters, before that new money started coming in, we'd have to adjust that contract because it speaks to the... A portion of the 5% that's collected today. But that's easily handled in early 2017. Yes, sir.
I'm going to interrupt you, but I got a question.
I did also want to mention, and the last time we discussed this, which I think was the last meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Shaw, asked about how the hotel operators feel about this. I did have a chance to speak to two of them today, who own and manage three properties. And as you might expect, there was some concern about the rate increase. And so I did want to have full disclosure and tell you that I think there is some concern from the hotel operators in the community because this is an unknown. And, you know, until it's implemented, until I can see the effect, I don't know how it's... If and how it's going to impact their business. So I did want to be upfront and mention that conversation as well. And there may be people here that wish to speak to that issue.
And what were their...
Go ahead.
What were their concerns, Justin? Was it just the amount, the dollar rate?
Yes, it was just... It was just... It's obviously an incredibly competitive business. And what they've seen lately is a lot of additional rooms added to the Oklahoma City metro. There's several new hotels being built in Midwest City. And there's about 2,500 new rooms being built in downtown Oklahoma City. And so what they're seeing is where people would traditionally maybe be more likely to stay on the outskirts of Oklahoma City and stay, for example, here on the eastern side of the metro. Now, because there's just more options for them to stay close to Oklahoma City or in downtown Oklahoma City, that their business is somewhat in flux. And so any increase in tax is a concern. At the same time, they did... These are people that have been in the community a long time. They recognize that there's a lot of needs, and they're good community partners. So they certainly know that this is a tough decision.
Can... Did they see the return on investment, like by adding to these places that bring in the customers with their businesses?
I think they did recognize that. They did still have a concern that, you know, it might not raise as much money as anticipated because perhaps, you know, some business may be lost.
Right.
It is unknown.
Yeah, it's unknown.
Competing with Oklahoma City and...
What I was thinking about is on the Pot County Museum, if you're going to advertise it, some of that's going to go for the maybe operation or something like that. It might help pass it because a lot of people don't like the Expo. So that might help get some votes for it.
Point is, at this point, we don't have to make that decision. And in fact, there's no additional language necessary except if we accept that percentage as being what we want, correct?
That's correct. This is...
That's what I was going to ask, and our legal advisor is... You know, because the way that we put this wording on the ballot in the past, it was actually designated for certain things. And so is the wording that we have sufficient to allow us to do what we want to do? Or does it need... Do we need to, you know, defer this another, you know, two weeks to where we meet again and have the language actually locked down? That's just a question.
Well, the language is locked down because it's already in the ordinance. And there's nothing about this that seeks to change the specific earmark. So we're not attempting to modify that at all. It would just... The only thing that would change would be the percentage. So if we're uncomfortable with the original language, that would be a discussion.
That's not what Justin just told us. He just told us if we didn't like the language, we could adjust, put something specifically in there that we wanted it to go to.
I agree. I don't think that was contradictory. Yeah.
You said it's only the number. But he said if we wanted to earmark it specifically for something, we could do it now.
I think we're saying the same.
Yeah.
Okay, let me... Can I ask you a clarification question? So what you're saying is that we could put this on the ballot and vote for it, and at any time, we can change the allocation percentage, even at the current... Because I was always told that we couldn't change the percentage.
The contract's a contract with VSI.
No, once it goes through... If this, as drafted, if this ballot measure went through, it would be subject to the unamended language within the ordinance, which earmarks it directly for, I believe...
See, that's what we're asking. That percentage is already said so much goes to VSI.
That's actually not in the statute.
No.
It's not in the statute?
It's contractual with VSI.
That's a contractual obligation. What it says in Section 25-234, "Funds collected pursuant to this article shall be set aside and used exclusively for one or more of the following purposes: Number one, encouraging, promoting, and fostering visitor and tourism conventions, conferences, and tourism development in the city." I think the key word there...
I was incorrect. I was misinformed.
But as Justin said, it will be very important, if the ballot measure passes, to revisit the contract with VSI to correct...
To make sure...
The rest of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And Justin, educate me. How did you come up with the 7.5%?
What I wanted to do is provide the maximum that staff would recommend. You know, when we talked about this in workshops and in previous meetings, we've kind of talked about a range from going from 5% to as high as 8%. So I looked at what was regionally appropriate.
Okay, that part I understood. But was there a reason we went to that 7.5 specifically other than the regional amounts?
No, that was the reason. I felt like 8 was too high, and I wanted to... 8 is the highest in the state. I don't think we want that distinction. And then also, the rate at the Grand Casino Resort is 7.77. I felt like it was important to standard that number.
Well, I certainly understand that we have a lot of needs here in the city, but I'm concerned about our hotel industry saying that they think that's a little high.
And this is certainly amendable by the commission, should you choose to lower that amount.
I think what Michael said, though, is so important. The money that's going to be raised is going to help them fill up their hotels and motels. If we don't fix the Expo up and we don't, you know, take care of some of the things here, then it's going to have a negative effect on people coming here. And so it's a tough one to swallow for... Number 30. So is there anyone who wants to make a motion on this?
Motion to approve. Oh, well, excuse me. I'm sorry. I just wanted to know, what is 1%? What is it in dollars? Like, if we were to talk real numbers right now...
Yes, sir.
What is that one... What is that one, for each 1%? And this is the 2.5% increase, right?
That is correct. So 1% is approximately $100,000 generated annually. So if you were to go up to two, the full 2.5%...
250.
You could. Now, of course, the, the hotel operators are concerned that, that might drop a little bit because maybe occupancy might be down slightly.
So...
So I think you'd be fair to, you know, you'd probably want to be conservative with it and say probably around $200,000 of additional.
If we were to just raise it only 2% instead of the, the whole 7.5...
Well, it might be 150, then, or 170.
Sure, but still, if, we want to make sure that we keep, you know, the hotel motel owners, like, you know, take...
Well, we got to remember, too, I can look out for them, but we also have to remember, this doesn't cost the citizens of Shawnee any money unless they go stay out there.
Well, if we lose contracts with...
Yeah, I understand if we lose contracts with the hotels.
It'll cost us a lot more than we, you know...
If we lose, I agree with that.
Restaurant meals.
Yeah, it'll lose a, a lot of traffic in our, in our businesses. Just...
Do we want to, do we have a motion?
Well, I don't know. We probably ought to discuss a number of just...
The, are you going to make a motion? Did you say, or not?
I, I will. I, I did make a motion. I made a motion to approve. I acknowledged that, you know, that Michael has, Commissioner Dykstra has a, has a good point. But, you know, I don't know, the difference between 2% and 2.5% is, is really going to change, you know, the number of people that stay in the hotel or not. It's, you know, you get up, you know, of course, incrementally, you can't just keep on...
You can't ever lower it, is what I'm saying. We could always raise it, but it's, it's hard to lower it. So if we just, just, it's just what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Start off with two, which is pretty big.
I need to say you start blackening this April of next year.
Yes, sir, April, April 1st.
Excuse me? While you were striving to oppose.
But Justin, I would just be clarified, the 2.5% was your recommendation or...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion to, to approve the 2.5%.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, then. Let's vote on this matter.
You want me to read?
Oh, I'm sorry, we can't vote.
Well, we voted.
Don't show the vote, don't show the vote. Go ahead and read it, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending the present hotel occupancy surcharge, amending sections 25 dash 226, 25 dash 228, and 25 dash 229, Division 1, Article 4 of Chapter 25 of the Code of the City of Shawnee, changing article title, setting effective date of the ordinance as July 18th, 2016, requiring approval of ordinance by majority of registered voters voting at an election held for such purpose as provided by law. Amending Section 25 dash 266, Division 2, Article 4 of Chapter 25 of the Code of City of Shawnee, amending the occupancy surcharge upon the service of furnishing rooms by hotels or motels within the city to 7.5% upon the gross receipts of each occupancy or $1 per occupied room per night, whichever is greater, and providing for separability.
Okay, now we can vote. I think we already voted. Motion carries.
Commissioner Gillum.
He didn't show up.
Oh, he didn't show up?
Hang on, hang on, I can fix that.
What?
Hang on, she can fix it.
We'll have to vote again.
Okay, we'll put her back. Clean it out and we'll do it.
I just don't like that, that rating.
Good eye.
Hey, are there people here from the hotels?
Yeah.
We, we...
I know.
There he is.
All right, let's...
Okay, you're going to clean the vote out?
We'll clear it.
Okay, now let's vote again. Okay? Motion carries. Okay, item number nine is, I guess, a resolution we have to pass after doing this ordinance. Is that right, Mr. Counsel?
That's correct.
Consider resolution calling for the holding of a special election November the 8th, 2016, for the purpose of adopting ordinance number 2583 NS, amending the present hotel motel surcharge to 7.5% of gross receipts or $1 per rental day, which is greater, as defined by the ordinance, providing for said election to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board, providing for voting by absentee ballot and fixing the effective date of the ordinance as the first day of April 2017. I guess we've pretty much had all our discussion already on that. Huh? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, Commissioner Gillum. Okay, let's vote. Well, you'll read the title again. Go ahead, I'll let you.
I don't want to do it anymore, do you want to hear it? A resolution calling and providing for the holding of a special election in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the purpose of adopting an ordinance amending the present hotel motel occupancy surcharge levied and assessed from 5% of gross receipts from all occupancy of hotel motel rooms or $1 per rental day on hotels and motels, as defined by ordinance or whichever is greater, to 7.5% of gross receipts from all occupancy of hotel motel rooms or $1 per rental day on hotels and motels, as defined by ordinance or whichever is greater, providing for said election to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board and providing by vote, providing for voting by absentee ballot.
Okay, now we can vote. Motion carries.
Consider approval of ballot.
Yep, I'm there. I was looking at some other things. Consider approval of ballot to be submitted to the election board. I guess we're going through all these steps to do that. At least you don't have to read this one. Okay, Chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Dykstra. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote.
Mr. Mayor, I actually do have to read this.
Really?
But I'll go fast. A resolution encouraging and requesting the Potawatomi County, oh, excuse me. I, I...
This is 10.
I'm sorry.
This is line item 10.
My bad.
Well, thank goodness, we're sick of hearing you read something. Let's vote.
We'd let you read it anyway.
Motion carries, okay? Item number 11, discussion, consideration, and possible action on a resolution asking the Potawatomi County Commissioners to place before the voters a ballot title permitting the Sunday sale of alcoholic beverages in restaurants. Discussion in this matter, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention that the city commission approved a resolution number 6471 on July 21st, 2014, which was essentially the same resolution that the county did go on and add it to the ballot. And it, it was a close election, but it did fail at the countywide level two years ago. So we are asking, staff is recommending that you do approve this resolution and that this question go back out before the voters. I can tell you that we, from an economic development perspective, it's, we are missing out on opportunities and some restaurants because of, because of the Sunday prohibition, which does not exist in Oklahoma County. So I'd have you answer any questions that you have.
And also, the county commissioners just suggest that if we kind of take the lead and put this request out to them, that they would follow up on it. And I'm sure they'll place it on the ballot. I think it only fails by what, less than a percent or something like that. So anyhow, it's, for economics sake, because restaurants won't come to Shawnee because they can't serve alcohol on Sunday. So that's one of the reasons that we're trying to do that, is from an economic standpoint, is to get more restaurants and competitive restaurants here in town so that they can, and if we approve this, I'm sure that's going to happen.
Any other comments? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
So I move.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dykstra. Would you read this title, please, sir?
Mr. Mayor, a resolution encouraging and requesting the Potawatomi County Commissioners to place before the voters of the county a ballot question allowing the Sunday sale of alcoholic beverages at restaurants in the county.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's vote. Motion carries, okay? Item number 12, consideration of a final plat for Shawnee Park Edition located on the south side of Transportation Drive, east of North Harrison Street, case number S1416, applicant Zimmerman Properties, deferred by the Planning Commission to their August 3rd meeting. I think we need a motion here to defer this until after the planning...
Do we need to move to table it, or do we just...
Just defer action until your August 15th meeting.
Motion to defer to August 3rd meeting.
Okay. If we have them, I'd be in August 15th, probably.
Or the first meeting in August, or, or the second in August.
Second meeting in August.
15th.
Have a motion by Commissioner Shaw. Do we have a second?
Because we meet on the first.
Second by Vice Mayor Harry. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's vote.
Do I not vote? I'm sorry, I'm not feeling well.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to open a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located on the east side of Harrison Street, north of Transportation Parkway from PUD Plan Unit Development to C3 Highway Commercial Case. Mr. DeBroon, would you like to share some info with us on this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. So this case here, again, the site is located on the northeast corner of Harrison and Transportation Parkway, so just north of the highway. The property is about 13.64 acres in size, was previously platted as Yagni Edition, lots 8 and 9. Lot 9 being about 4.5 acres and Lot 8 about 9 acres. In 2008, the land was rezoned from C3 to a plan G development. And the design statement that was created for the plan G development was very specific, had a lot of regional detention, cross-access agreements, architectural elements that were similar between structures and even common signage areas. And really, since that time, the land has been sold piecemeal and really doesn't comply with the plan G development at all. So what I'm asking is really a technicality, taking the plan G development, enacting the reversion clause and bringing it back to C3. I don't want to confuse this. This is for a religious facility and they're allowed to go in as is now, but just for future development in that area, this is going to really clean it up some. So staff does recommend reversion of this, this land here from plan G development to C3. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any restrictions or anything on that to start with?
What's that?
Are there any restrictions or anything on that to start with?
There really weren't. There were, it comprised a very large list of, of uses that can be done in C3. So really, no restrictions were placed.
No, if it's in PUD and then you go from, to C3, you said it's a church that owns it now? If they sell it, I was just wondering, if it's in Zone C3, or if it's, if we leave it at PUD, then what does that do with, with their options to do more stuff with it?
Sure. So the plan G development's really an overlay zone on top of what is already C3. So, so based on the plan G development statement, there's really nothing that restricts any C3 development on it currently. So nothing will really change.
So what is the reason why we need to clean it up if nothing changes?
Because we'd be approving when they go to get a building permit, essentially, um, design requirements that, that are dictated by the plan G development, cross-access agreements that were decided upon years ago. So, and, and that plan G development really covers about 55 acres out there. And since it cannot be used for the original intent, it's really the best move at this point to, as we deal with each property, unfortunately, bring it back to C3.
Gotcha. It's, it's sort of like an oversight. I didn't understand what the plan thing was.
Right. Originally, planning developments are, are done typically by, by one owner and establishes a master planned site and how the development will work. And again, all this, all this regional, regional drainage and access. And once that kind of falls apart, each one of these new property owners buys it to use it as C3 and not as restrictions that were placed on the original plan G development.
So, Justin, then it would be safe to say there wasn't any adjoining property owners that were concerned about this change?
We've got to get through this.
No, ma'am. No, we've not seen any.
Public hearing and all that, then we're just about finished.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will open our public hearing and call for anyone in favor of this that'd like to come forward to speak. Yes, sir? State your name and be sure and sign in there, please.
He's going to get away from me. My name is Jim Beach. I'm with Wallace Engineering from Tulsa, here representing Life Church, who is the applicant on this property. And I just wanted to make sure that, and reiterate what Justin said, that the, the situation you have here is the underlying zoning is C3. It, in and of itself, would allow the church by right. The PUD also allows the church by right, but because over time, other developments have come into that PUD without being in conformance, I think, with the PUD in certain ways, that it's almost been rendered obsolete. So I think, as Justin mentioned, it's, it's probably in your interest to remove the PUD and clean up that zoning so that we have a more simple, straightforward approach. So at this point, then the church would just come in, apply for a building permit, and be permitted.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of this? If not, is there anyone here that would like to, that's opposed to this matter? Please come forward. Okay, not seeing anyone coming forward against opposing it, then I will close our public hearing. We have heard our staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion?
Motion to approve, per staff recommendation.
We have a, we have a motion to approve, per the staff...
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Okay. Would you read the title, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, two whip, lots 8 and 9, Yagni Edition, Phase 1 to the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. According to the recorded plat thereof, rezoning said property from PUD Plan Unit Development to C3 Highway Commercial and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number 14 is discussed in consideration and possible action regarding a press release that provides information and status of the current, the recent court proceedings between the City of Shawnee and the citizens of Potawatomi Nation, the Oklahoma Tax Commission, and the citizen of Potawatomi Nation. I think Commissioner Hall, you asked for this, you want to speak to it?
So, so I was the one that requested this beyond the ballot. And to me, it's just real simple. The public, the public needs to know what's going on. I've had several questions lately from various parts of the city, from various citizens, asking, what does this mean? What does that mean? There's been some things that's published in the paper that wasn't necessarily correct and, you know, it was erroneous. And the, the, the press can't go out and do any fact checking or anything like that, so it's not a reflection of the press. They just report what, you know, people tell them in, in letter to the editors or in press releases. So all this is, is, is asking our, our legal to, to put in simple, you know, language, here's the status of everything. Just like the gentleman that come up here earlier seems to think that we're still suing CPN. We're not, right? We're not actively going after anything, to my knowledge, right now. And so the, the people need to know that. There's lots of misunderstandings about what's, the different court cases that are going on and, and, you know, whether they're, we're the ones that are seeking or we're defending. And so we just need the public to be able to, you know, read something that is, that the city puts out that's fact-based, that's in simple language, you know, that they can understand. And that's all I'm asking for, right? I think the public has a right to know. Instead of trying to keep things secret, the public should have a right to know what all this really is. That's all. And so it's, to me, it's a real simple vote tonight, yes or no? If it's yes, then, then our legal will, will, you know, draft something over the next few weeks to, to put out.
Do we already have something like that on the website? I mean, is there a, and if we're, if they're talking about something that's already, that's in litigation, it's policy, we don't speak about it at all, right?
I don't know that I've ever seen a written policy to that effect that is a...
That tends to be a policy during active litigation, not to discuss matters. But there's, I, I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner Hall is more of a public
there's, I, I think, what I'm hearing from Commissioner Hall is more of a public record, fact-based recitation, in layman's terms, as opposed to a dissertation on legal strategy and things of that nature. So I, I think that's a huge difference. As to the first, that's probably different than not commenting, 'cause it's essentially just putting out there in a digestible format, the status of a case which is public record. The second one, I would be adamantly opposed to for many, many reasons, but I don't think that's what's being discussed.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not asking to get into strategy or...
But no, no, what if you're just giving the city's side of the story? Like, you're just putting out information, like, if it's, if it's public record already, then, you know, the, the, they could actually go and read it and put it out there. I mean, we don't need to put out our side of the story, do we? I mean, from a lawyer...
Don't know if we'd put out our side of the story. I just wonder why we'd have to do it all through. Why don't we just say the city has no lawsuits against the CPN?
That's, that's true, that's a true statement.
And that's a true statement. I don't know. Why don't we get the newspapers to print that? Why do we need to do all that?
Because apparently, the press and people don't know that, right?
Well, they do now.
They don't know that. And they don't know that OTC is still, is still believes that there's, they're going after the retail sales tax, that that's still actively, the, the recent ruling by the arbitrator had very little to do with what the OTC is doing on some of their other cases. So...
I have a big problem with bringing a state into this, but we have our particular questions that, not the answer, according to our standpoint, but it's almost looking like we're a surrogate to the state, and even if that were true, I don't see any reason we should make it appear that way.
I'm, I'm not asking for that. There's lots of other things that the state's doing that, that we have, has no bearing on us whatsoever. This one particular case does have bearing on our future. It does impact Shawnee. So the one particular case that, that OTC does have, does impact what our citizens should know about, right? And at least, at a very high level, I'm not asking for details, Commissioner Daxter, just at a high level, here's what's going on. It's still, it's still being litigated. You know, it may be another two years before it's resolved, but here's the facts, here's what it is.
And you wanna, you wanna make sure it's filtered through, I'm gonna try to kind of...
I just wanna make sure, I, I just wanna make, well, I'm not a, you know, I, it has to, I think it needs to be something that is published by the city in order for peo, people to say, well, you know, okay, it's an attorney looked at, it's gotta be true. I mean...
I'm just about to laugh because of your friend that works for the Oklahoman, every time you call him, he publishes something, so...
First of all, he's not, he's not my friend. I don't know why people talk about that, because I have met him one time and had three conversations, so...
He wrote three stories one time you met him?
I have only met him one time. He did an interview with several people. He came down the same time he did Chairman Barr, same time, and he interviewed me many one time.
Well, let's get back, let's get back to the issue here.
Mayor, I think I certainly appreciate the thought of transparency, but I agree with you. I believe it's already been said. I think we don't have any current cases, and I certainly appreciate what Commissioner Gillum said, we can't answer for the Oklahoma Tax Commission.
But we could, could we just get a legal update, like, at every meeting?
We are scheduled to, right, at the executive session time.
But that, but that's, that's been the problem in the past. It's always been an executive session. We need to be transparent and show the public what's going on, right?
But it is transparent. We're talking transparent here, right now, saying that we have no lawsuits pending to the CPN. How much more transparent can we be?
I, I, if you don't wanna vote yes to provide the public some sort of official press release, that's fine. I still wanna make a motion to, to release, to have our legal refresh and release a motion. If you wanna vote no to keep the public in the dark, that's your prerogative.
I don't see that we're trying to keep the public in the dark.
If you wanna vote no to keep the public in the dark, that's your prerogative.
Okay, hey, wait, you made a motion, right?
I made a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Not hearing a second, then the motion's gonna fail. Okay, sorry. Whoop, Commissioner Hall. Okay, sales tax report. Come with, bring some good news.
July sales tax, for this year, July sales tax was one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which was up thirty-three thousand from last year, which is about two point three one percent. The breakdown here is for the whole fiscal year from July to June, that's the date it was received, with the percentages of the up and down. The difference between two thousand and fourteen and two thou, two thousand and fourteen fifteen to this current fiscal year, this ended June thirtieth, was six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars more sales tax than over the year, and the retail sales were six hundred and fourteen thousand of that six fifty-nine.
That's crazy.
Good news.
It's good news.
So, use tax, July collection was a hundred and six thousand, which was higher than July last year of only sixty-three thousand. So, if anybody has any questions, sales tax...
Yeah, I always like to be kept up to speed on our payments to how they are working on the new mall.
What we're doing is every quarter, this, the sales tax we just received last week was actually for June collection. So, we got the reports on Friday.
Okay.
I've already done a payment request to get that check wired to them. It'll probably go tomorrow. So I'm doing it...
So that's gonna come out of our total here. Can you give us an idea about how much that is?
Um, I think, for the last quarter, was a hundred thousand dollars.
So we still clear some five hundred and something?
Yeah.
For the whole year, I don't remember off the top of my head what we paid, but the quarter, everything's up and running now, everything's, you know, they're pretty full out there.
Sure.
It is paying, you know, we do have to pay about, you know, but we're still getting some.
Those are jobs for people, too.
Correct.
Thank you. You can come back next month if you bring good news.
Hey, we're doing really well. Everybody else is like cold, you know?
Sure. We are blessed.
And the use tax is doing really well. And there's other revenues, I'm going to try to by next month, to get a, like, I do the top ten revenues, because sales tax is one, is the largest, obvious, but there's other ones like court fines, et cetera, that are doing very well. Yeah, franchise fees, overall, they're doing very well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Erickson, any new business?
There's no new business, sir.
No new business. Commissioners' comments?
Baxter? Just, I'm looking forward to working with the new commission. I know that our city just had a pretty hard-fought election, and congratulations to everyone. And, yeah, I'm looking forward to, to moving our city forward as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
I've seen a lot of recent construction out there. I love the fact that we do have a lot of construction going on, and there's a lot of building within the city of Shawnee. And yes, even though comments were made, I welcome the new city commissioners, so...
Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Well, I once again wanna thank Avedis for what they're doing. This is, this is fantastic, and we should, the city commission ought to look real hard at how to, how to, you know, extend the sidewalks even farther, in my opinion, and some of these other areas that, where, especially where schoolchildren are needed. This, this is great, and, and it's, it's unbelievable that we have a foundation like this that can help the citizens the way they do, not only in our city, but in the, in the county, in the community. It's fantastic.
Hi, Mayor Harris.
Commissioner Daxter just mentioned about the election. I'm tickled to death about the results of it, and it was a hard fought, very difficult election for some of us. And I would say, I got a note from one of my supporters, and they said that this is probably one of the most important elections in several years for the city of Shawnee, and I do appreciate all your support, and looking forward to working with this commissioner for the remainder of the year, the remainder till September, but looking forward to the new commission. I, looking forward to many great things. The Saditas Foundation thing is a really super great thing. I came to, I haven't been out in a few days, but I came to downtown Shawnee and noticed that Broadway was open finally, so I'd say thumbs up to that. And, you know, as many, you look around, Commissioner Shaw is right, you look around, a lot of construction. Everything I see is positive, from a hospital to OBU to construction, economic development, everything. It's the most positive thing we've had going in years, so let's keep it, keep it up, and looking forward to working with everyone.
Commissioner Gillum, would you like to?
Yes, I do. It's kinda my motto, I guess, is seventy-nine is the new sixty-two, by the way. Secondly, God willing and health holding up, I intend to be up here for a full four years.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other comments? Okay, then I will recess our city commission meeting and call to order our Shawnee Airport Authority, I believe. I'll call it first, and I'll declare that we do have a quorum. Okay, and number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Sub moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Daxter. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Question, second by Commissioner Shaw. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is discussed considering possible action on a resolution to amend the rules and regulations for the operation of Shawnee Regional Airport. Mr. English?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners, new Commissioners. Kenan English, Assistant Airport Manager. Real quick, before I touch on this, is I just wanted to say that we had a really good last fiscal year, last year at the airport. Revenues continue to increase every year, even despite some of the projects that we took on that we weren't budgeted for. I do believe we were able to cover the costs and even come out with a surplus, again, this year, which is several surpluses years in a row. And I say that because I will be coming and asking the commission for money down the road, so remember this, remember the good times. Yes, this, this item is a resolution to amend the airport rules and regulations, Section seven B, and adding nine oh. This regards maintenance rules at the airport, specifically, who is allowed to do maintenance on the airport. And by, by that, I mean, Section seven B, and I can read it if, if I need to, but basically, this restricts any aircraft owner or tenant out at the airport from hiring, you know, say, his own personal mechanic to come out to the airport and work on his aircraft. Basically, what this requires him to do is take his aircraft to one of two maintenance facilities that are on the airport, because if you read Section seven B, it says no maintenance or repairs are to be done anywhere on the airport other than where there are, unless it's a designated maintenance facility. So what, what this does is it restricts the aircraft owner from hiring his own, but it also enforces me to, or forces me to, anytime that I see a mechanic come and try to work on an aircraft owner's plane, it forces me to approach him, approach the aircraft owner and say, hey, listen, this is the rule, you can't have your own mechanic out here, you have to go to one of these maintenance facilities. It's, it's the airport staff's opinion, and it's the airport board's opinion as well, that's, that rule is a little too restrictive, for a couple of reasons. One, it's, it's very difficult to enforce, given the limited resources that we have. I'm the one that has to enforce that policy. I'm not always around, especially in the evenings and the weekend. And two, I'm not sure, we're not sure that the airports needs to get in the business of regulating what individuals do to their own personal property. So we are proposing eliminating Section B to allow an aircraft owner, a tenant of ours, at least as a T-hanger, at least as a hangar from anywhere, to bring their personal mechanic to work on their aircraft, because a lot of these guys have mechanics that they trust, that they've been using for several years. And, but that's not to say that we shouldn't be concerned about exposure to liability, because this, this does mean that you have people coming from the outside onto the airport that are doing work on somebody's, somebody's aircraft. In our opinion, and our legal counsel can speak to this if he wants to, I, I really don't know of any cases where we're exposed to any liability for allowing somebody to, to use their own personal mechanic on their aircraft, and in fact, in trying to regulate that, we may open ourselves up to more exposure by trying to enforce that, or failing to enforce that, and what have you.
I have to be a certified mechanic.
They have to be a certified mechanic, if they do certain types of repairs, annuals, hundred-hour inspections, stuff like that. But I, it's also important to state that if we do repeal this, this section, keep in mind that in our, when our, when we have a aircraft owner sign a lease to rent a hangar, a T-hanger, it is stated in his lease that any third party that is in the direct, that is involved in the maintenance or the care of that aircraft, he is not to hold the city harmless in any personal injury that he may cause on somebody, any property damage that he may cause, and that the aircraft owner, the less see, is responsible for any damage that a third party that is involved in that aircraft's maintenance or care does to the premises.
What about their responsibility to make sure that the mechanics are certified and all of that?
Yeah, we, we had lengthy discussions about that, and really, the conclusion that was reached, and I'm in support of, is not doing that for the reason that Mr. English previously stated, is if we're gonna have all these regulations, but we don't have the manpower to enforce them, we run into a situation where we could be drug into something because we should have stopped and by our own policy.
Can you...
They had a non-certified person work on their plane, either inspecting or otherwise, they're in trouble, so they've gotta be inspected.
They're assuming the risk at that point.
Can you, can you educate me, maybe you or Justin, do we carry an umbrella insurance policy? Will this increase cost or, or anything, or will it reduce cost by them...
Not to my knowledge, ma'am.
Any impact? Okay.
Do the, any part of procedures, do they check in with you before they go out to the hangars?
No, they do not.
Can we just make it part of that, so you...
When, we talked about that as well. I think that, that's probably a good idea. It, it's, it's still a good practice to monitor who is, who is entering the airport and who's going off. That's still a good practice, in fact, because what you don't want to happen is that you have outsiders coming down to the airport and trying to solicit business and set up a shop out of their hangar, set up a shop out of the back of their truck on the airport without a contract with us, or insurance, or anything like that. So that's important to, to discourage and...
Well, I served on that board for many years, and that's always been a struggle. What you're addressing, and our biggest problem was somebody trying to put a mechanic shop in a hangar, and thinking that they could do that, you know? And that, that's been a struggle always, you know? That I can remember, instead of using a good facility and all that, so we don't have to worry about that with this.
And that's, if, if you notice, adding Section nine oh would, would put that in, would put exactly what you're talking about in there. It says T-hangers are for storage of aircraft and their equipment only. It's not for commercial use.
And not for work, turning wrenches either, right? Is what you're saying, in the T-hangers? Unless they go to the maintenance shop?
Right, but, but, but eliminating Section seven B would allow their own personal mechanic to come, come to their aircraft, into the T-hanger and work on there. But you can't open up a business in a T-hanger. So, the mayor's right, this has been a debate among the airport board and constituents of the state of Oldisburg a very long time, and I thought it was important to get it on the books, because I've, I've been forced to enforce this, this rule for, since I've been, since I've been here.
I thought you were coming here to get a gun permit, to enforce.
I probably need that, too.
Could you educate me now, on this one part where it has the language on the nine oh, it says unless authorized in writing by the city, who will be doing that authorization?
I would...
For the city.
Probably you, right?
Well, actually, it probably, it would probably be you, because if, if any commercial activity that's, that's gonna be authorized or put to a contract, I'm gonna have to, you have to vote on that, definitely.
Because that would be probably a lease, then.
That would be a lease.
How do they get the parts to come in for those, for this repair? Do they, do, do they just come in, do the mechanics bring them in, or do they get them?
Yeah, for the most part.
You guys don't sell parts, sir?
No, we don't sell parts. And, and that's to say that, you know, it hasn't been a real big issue. I, I bring this up just to clear, make it clear for myself and future airport authorities, but we haven't really had an issue where people are bringing in parts and trying to do big projects, right, anything like that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I need to ask for clarification, legal counsel. Is this a conflict, considering there is a city commissioner who has a plane out there?
You're not on the airport, or you're not on the other airport?
You're looking at me?
No, he's looking at James. You still have a plane out there?
No.
No, you don't have one?
No.
Okay, all right, never mind.
Why not?
I don't have a plane today. When you get a hundred and four, they make you quit flying. I'm on a plane. When you get 104, they make you quit flying.
Yeah, they take your license at 104.
I, I thought he had one, the way you said that before.
Okay, I'll get back here. We need, I'll take a motion in this matter.
Okay, I move if we, that we adopt a suggestion from Keenan English.
Okay, we have a motion. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Hall. Would you read it, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution by the Shawnee Airport Authority to adopt rules and regulations for the operation of Shawnee Regional Airport.
Motion carries. Any new business?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll adjourn to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I will call it to order and declare that we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Vice Mayor here, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, any new business?
No, sir.
Okay, item number three is consider an executive session for discussion and possible legal action regarding potential claims, litigation, and transition of legal representation or other options regarding CPN District Court Case, CIV 2015-031, Citizen Potawatomi Nation versus the Shawnee Municipal Authority, as authorized by 25OS. Chair, entertain a motion to go into executive session on one of these matters.
So moved.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor here, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Daxter, let's vote. Motion carries. I'm going to recess the Shawnee Municipal Authority to the city commission, and I'm going to reconvene our city commission, and item number 19 is discussion, consideration, and possible action to go into executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding emergency 911 wireless telephone fees that were collected and not remitted to the city. Chair, entertain a motion in this matter.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Daxter, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gillum, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number 20 is discussion, consideration, and possible action to go into executive session, consider an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation, and transition of legal representation or other options regarding Potawatomi County District Court Case CJ 2014-128, the Citizens Potawatomi Nation by Linda Capps, its vice chairman, and Deanna Jesse versus the City of Shawnee, as authorized by 25OS. Chair, entertain a motion in this matter.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Daxter, and I have a second by Vice Mayor here, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number 21 is to go, consider an executive session to discuss annual evaluations of the city manager, city treasurer, and city judge per sent to 25OS, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, discipling, or resignation of any individual salary public officer or employee. We'll entertain a motion in this matter.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gillum, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Motion carries. Let's go into executive session, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, I will call our meeting back to order. Item number 22 is consider matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding an emergency 911 wireless telephone fees that were collected and not remitted to the city. Do we have a motion in this matter?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I'm moved to authorize counsel to provide, or to file a suit against Pot County 911 Trust if final demand letter is not accepted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gillum.
Okay. Wait, Commissioner Gillum, second, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, let's vote.
Just a second, Mayor.
Okay.
Final demand letter is not accepted.
We'll give you what you get.
You'll give it to me, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, let's vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, James is gone.
James is gone, that's okay. Motion carries. Okay. Item number 23 is consider matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation, and transition of legal representation or other options regarding Potawatomi County District Court Case, number CJ 2014-128, the Citizen Potawatomi Nation by Linda Capps, its vice chairman, and Deanna Jesse versus the City of Shawnee. Is there a motion in this matter? Okay, not hearing any motion, then we'll move on to item number 24. Consider matters discussed in executive session regarding discussion of evaluations of city manager, city treasurer, and city judge per suit to 25OS, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, and discipling or resignation of any individual salary public officer. The only person, based on Vice Mayor here's condition, was that we reviewed the judge, okay, and we would like to move the next executive session to review you two, okay, so that James can be there, if that's all right.
But do we need a motion?
We do have a motion.
Yeah, yeah, I need a motion to approve the judge's contract, do you have one?
A motion to, to approve, renew, approve the judge's contract for another year at the salary that we indicated, at the compensation that we agreed to discuss.
Agreed on, okay.
Is that sufficient?
Is that what you need?
Or do you need to know that?
Or do you need the amount?
I think we need the amount.
Fifty thousand.
At 50,000, part back, okay, okay. All right, we have a motion.
Still part-time.
Huh?
Still part-time, no better package.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Daxter. Okay, all right, then let's vote. Motion carries. I don't believe there are any other items in executive session.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, overlooked that.
Do we need a motion? No, I guess we don't need a motion on the other two.
We're okay, we can just add those.
To our next city commission meeting.
I move that we review city treasurer and city managers?
No, I think, I thought I had that, okay?
Strike that, okay.
So we still need, okay, then I need to adjourn our, I mean recess our city commission meeting, call to order the municipal authority meeting, okay? Consider matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation, and transition of legal representation or other options regarding Citizen Potawatomi Nation District Court Case, CIV 2015-031, City Potawatomi Nation versus the City of Shawnee Authority. Is there any motions in this matter? Not hearing any motions, then I will close that item, and I will close the municipal authority and reconvene our commission meeting and adjourn our commission meeting. Thank you all.